...into our scheduled finance committee meeting. Councilors, you have been provided with appropriate backup detailing some of the actuals as well as obviously the budget and also a presentation given by Director of Finance, Mark Cavanagh for the at-home viewer. We're here tonight to agree on the budget and we will subsequently be doing so this coming Friday, May 12th. And that session will begin at 8:30 a.m. So with that being said, I would welcome Jim Powers to the microphone. Good evening, Jim.
Good morning.
And Jim, I'll let you introduce yourself, but you are the independent outside auditor for the city of Quincy accurate intro.
That's it.
And a good guy.
Okay. Well, thank Brad, councilors. I'm here tonight just to give a brief overview of last year's audit and obviously we're planning this year's audit as we go forward. Obviously, we're not going to go through in detail the audit itself, but from an overview standpoint, we didn't have, when we go through and we audit, we audit not only the year-end numbers, but we also take a look at the activity and the reports that are produced during the year and we test those as we go forward. We found that the system of internal controls in place is sufficient to make sure that you're getting accurate reports not only at year-end, but also during the year. So if you're going through a little bit of a process of where you are at this point in time, say, making decisive decisions, you can accurately rely on the reports of where you are this year as you do them. Couple of things that we do audit, we audit is a report called the Schedule of Federal Awards. And basically, it's a compliance audit that the federal government requires you take a look at. Anybody that receives over $750,000 a year in federal awards, whether direct from them through the state or even the college, they've got about $20 million worth of grants and they're included as part of that. They have their own separate audit, but it's also included as part of the city's audit. That report, as we went through it, is what we call a clean report. We had no findings. The school does a great job on that, community development, all the people will take a look at it. We go through all kinds of compliance tests and the report is as good as you can get. So that's kind of where we are there. As the management letter we go through, when we take a look and make suggestions to the administration on things that need improvement as we go through, there's no what we call material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Those are the things that you really need to be concerned about. If you had material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, that wouldn't have made that earlier statement. That's it. You can produce accurate timely information during the year because usually that directly results in bad internal controls not giving you information throughout your life. A couple of minor points that we go through, but one of the things that we need to work on is probably the biggest point in the letter this year is, and a couple of people already mentioned, the retirement system and the city share of the liability for the pension system. The city and the college needs and in housing relies on the retirement system to produce that information that the city uses in their financial statements. And for the last couple of years, it's a new standard that's out there, the report from the retirement system has been really, really late, which causes the city, we could have been issuing this financial statement, our audit, probably back in October, November, December, but we had to wait till the end of March before we got the information from them. And the management letter through the administration is requesting that the mayor, the president of college, contact the retirement system to work out a way that you can get this information more timely because it's a little dated because of this, but there's no options. It's not the city's issue, it's the retirement system. Oh, the other points in there the city's working on is not that significant. The actual financial statements themselves, the city has on a budgetary basis about $5.5 million at the end of fiscal year 2016 in the general fund, another $10-plus million in stabilization fund. That number is kind of old for a city this size. It's still maintaining some of your ratings as you go through that, but the city probably, you know, needs to think about building up those reserves because any type of event, see like happened a couple of years ago with the snow and ice, we had that huge deficit that obviously eats into that particular amount. So from a planning standpoint, I think obviously budgeting revenues conservatively as you go through and that has a lot to do with coming up with a balanced budget and planning what you want to do. Obviously, you can't replace all of those funds right away, but you have a $300 million budget and you only have $15 million in reserve and $10 million of that's in stabilization fund. That's not a lot of reserves in comparison to other communities. I don't set policy, but in comparison to other communities, it's on the low side. So just think of that as you go through. And the water and sewer funds, the other two that are really budgeted as part of that, they're maintaining positive, certified, you pay earnings over there and they're paying for their services without burdening the general fund. So that's kind of an overview of the financial statements. I know one of the things that Brad and I talked about is the DIF fund. And if you want to get into any questions or discussion, I can give you a quick overview of that. The DIF fund for the development downtown, the city already maintains the correct accounting that in fiscal year 2016, there was about $2 million worth of tax revenues directly related to the DIF that's calculated by the RKG as they go through and then amongst people, that's required to pay any debt service on the bonds that are taken out for the project itself. In fiscal '16, the only thing that was being paid at that point in time was interest and the interest rates are really low, which is great, but you paid about $500,000 worth of interest expense. And then from the standpoint of whether or not you want to keep a sinking fund for the DIF fund, the payment of debt service, that's a policy decision that the city makes. You can either transfer any excess back to the general fund, which has been happening, or you could take a look at the long-term projections that you get. And basically, to simplify this, if the long-term projections of the revenues coming in, especially with the parking garage, et cetera, are sufficient to meet the expected debt service, then it's an option that you can either return the money to the general fund and just keep paying for that debt service over those specific revenue accounts, or you could set up a sinking fund. But that's a policy decision that needs to be made relative to that. We don't set the policy, but the sinking fund itself is obviously an option as you go through. If you get to a point that the long-term projected amounts aren't sufficient to cover the debt service, you have to leave the money in the sinking fund. You don't have the option to run it back into the general fund. And that's kind of where you want to, if you have any questions on that and also.
Before we get into Q and A, just a little aside of my part, I mean, to the record, the opening meeting law, Jim, which is pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, may transmit the meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised such recordings and transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and transmissible. So sorry to interrupt the momentum of.
That's what you were saying, always that to the future.
But, you know, my point, and thank you again for coming, and we have had some, you know, back and forth regarding that issue. I know some councilors have brought that up prior to our resolution that I introduced maybe a month or two ago, saying, let's take a look at this account. So I guess kind of before I go into my Q and A, I'd open it up to anyone that they had anything to take up related to that. Okay.
Just a second.
Yes, councilor.
Again, just for some perspective on this, Jim, when we first started, we actually did have some material findings that we noticed in terms of pretty some strong systemic issues that have been in place for a very long time, particularly in terms of certain controls and the like. But what you're saying today is, again, because I can remember reading off of them at each session, but basically you're saying today we have a clean audit and that all of those specific things have been, in your professional opinion, have been addressed and changed.
Yes, I mean, it's a clean audit, nothing's perfect. The suggestions were made, deficiencies, difficult things to do, but council, when we first started doing it, there were, the management letter was pretty long and some excluding the significant points in there, that would consider significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, and it took years for those all to come down.
Which you list every year.
Yeah.
And progress and where we could get rest and where we might regress, but the point is those things have all been addressed at this point. The only other question I have, and this is more out of curiosity than anything else, but specifically in terms of the federal budget requirements, which I understand they can be quite sort of important, cumbersome, yeah, very, or really difficult and complicated, but I was just curious specifically, do those also reflect cases where we're paying personnel out of those federal funds?
Yes. Yes, a lot of school funds, a lot of grants that you get, especially with the.
And we're meeting all of like the time and effort, patience, in terms of how that's reported.
Yes, what do you think of compliance requirements? And there's actually new rules this year called uniform guidance, but the school does a really good job on their grants and compliance with that, and so do the other departments.
We have to show, as I understand it, basically, when they're timed and effort, linkage back to specific grants.
Right.
And that's all clean, that's, they're doing a good job.
Again, nothing's perfect, but.
No, I understand that.
And it has to give you some room now that the materiality is in play. You get $20 million worth of assistance, so we're not checking every $5,000 of them.
Right.
What we're looking at is primarily the system in place to make sure that we stay in compliance with the federal rules and then test codes, sort of sample those into specific test on specific larger transactions as you go through. And then there are also some compliance requirements that go on, beyond just the accounting of this, make sure that the reporting is for that.
Thank you, Mr. Shin.
Thank you, councilor. Jim, just kind of dating back to that, you know, I think you called the sinking fund, is that sort of the terminology for the DIF? So basically, the way the financing setup, right, originally and to this day was that the downtown revenues would meet and exceed any expectation that, or obligation you would have to meet with the bonds that you put out in the market.
Right.
So what we're talking about, kind of what caught my interest here is when we saw a report that was presented to us by RKG, I think it showed maybe surplus revenue of, it was like $1.2 million, something along those lines. So right now, it's, as it's set up and was initially set up, by the way, was that those excess revenues would essentially transfer themselves into the general fund and at the time on free cash certification would become part of that process, correct?
Correct.
And then they're gone.
Well, they're just part of the general fund, they're not gone, they're there for, the council lays a decision.
So essentially, what we're talking about is a policy decision that would, maybe sort of isolate those funds within their own surplus revenue account inside of the DIF, so inside of downtown, right? And I think that.
Yeah, if you have the surplus in there.
The questioning that you and I had is, and this is just the way that my brain works, is like, worst case scenario, right, the worst case scenario, and the revenue weren't fully self-supported for the debt downtown. I don't see anything to show me that that's going to happen, but worst case scenario, the thought would be that this money would be tucked away in its own sinking fund or stabilization or whatever you wanted to call it, help offset the burden of risk, how would be the obligation that we're, as the city, required to meet to pay for that debt, correct?
It would, it would be, there was a sinking fund for that particular purpose until the decision was made to use it either for additional funding or as a cushion as you go through, but every dollar that you put in there is a dollar of free cash that you dump. I mean, that's just as, you know, and so if you keep money aside for that, that will mean to balance a budget, you might have to raise your rate, et cetera, because any reserve, any stabilization reserve, any type of reserve that you put aside will require in effect a vote to stabilization to increase taxes for that transfer to the stabilization fund, or if the policy is to build up that reserve and that reserve was used to either increase your general fund fund balance, that will require obviously.
But here's the thing.
Correct. Again, that's the policy.
Correct me if I'm wrong, provided that you continue to have a surplus.
Right.
In this sinking fund that's located inside the DIF.
Right.
You still have that transferability clause, where you could take that money and use it if you needed to offset something in the general.
Correct.
Provided that you continue to have surplus. So I just kind of want to articulate that, that's, you know, that's important to consider. And I guess like, you know, my thought regarding the whole free cash respect, free cash is essentially, you know, breakage in your budget, right?
Yeah, I can't, you believe.
Right? So it's, it sort of varies. No budget's spot on, you know, you don't hit something in the spot, but the way I've always, you know, seen free cash, it's almost like finding a $20 bill and taking jeans out of laundry. It's great to have, but I don't base my family's budgetary needs on my ability, you know, to find free cash and report. So it's nice to have, but.
Yeah, but I mean, that, what I said earlier for finding that $20, because your system of internal control around your accounting is pretty good, at any point in time, if you have an appropriation surplus, so a department turns back $300,000, there's that $300,000 you found in your pockets, or you can review as you go through the year and kind of know every one of those dollars as you go through. Conversely, if someone's going to be over, like the snow and ice deficit, you know, that's going to be a hit to your free cash once you go over. Same thing with your revenue projections. Once you've hit last year's budget amount of 17, any dollar in excess is free cash. Any dollar in deficit is a reduction of free cash. So it's.
I understand. I guess the way that my mind was always sort of viewing it is that if the DIF is its own separate entity.
Yep.
Regardless of what happens in that account, I feel like it should almost be isolated in that account. Granted, I mean, I heard to talk about it, we would pay interest, that's we've been rolling bands for, what, 10 years? Now, I would assume that that number's going to continue to drop as we start to again to.
Yeah, I expect that surplus to grow smaller because you start paying down the principal piece, that's one, the $2 million you didn't, it's not just a half a million dollars, might be another $1 million worth of principal you have to pay down on that particular debt.
If you understand.
As you go through. So it's, it's long-term projections to make sure that you're satisfied, but regardless of anything else, any shortfall in the DIF still has to be paid by the general fund. So if, if the numbers, the projections end up being wrong, the general fund is going to.
That's the result.
Part of the DIF and part of the economic development we expect is that the general fund is supposed to benefit from that too, especially if the growth that you see in the taxes and the value of properties exceed what the expectations are. So you may be generating more money that can help reduce the taxes on everybody else in the city, not in that particular area. So it's, it is not a number that's hiding fast, it is, it's long-term projections with a lot of assumptions in there, so there's nothing perfect in that, no.
Appreciate that. Any council force?
Thank you, Mr. Shin. I just threw you to Jim. I just wanted to follow up, I had a question on the sinking fund, and Councilor did a great job with that. What are you seeing in other communities doing with their, so they creating a separate fund or they rolling into the general fund? Because, you know, the first thought you've got is just make sure downtown's care for itself, but you're right, the residents out in the neighborhoods are saying, what about me, you bring this growth downtown and that is variable, so taxes low for everybody.
Don't really see a lot of DIFs out there, that's one of the things, some true DIFs as you go through. I'd say Quincy is probably one of the bigger ones and the true DIFs, and they do happen out there.
Yeah.
Some of the ones that we may not audit, that might be other communities, but in talking with the people, they kind of look at it as, we've got to make sure that we maintain a positive cash flow throughout the project to make sure that the project in effect pays for itself. All the expenditures the city made is guiding additional revenues to support all of that so there's no net cost on any other citizen as you go through. But it's still the same tax rate, just because you live in the DIF or you have a business in the DIF, it's the same tax rate regardless. And so I don't see a lot of DIF funds being built up, but they're a lot smaller in size and scope than Quincy is one of the largest ones I've seen.
I think, you know, particularly with the construction of downtown, seeing a lot of public needs, so for example, the town does a lot of, the town, the suburbs and things that, there are, on our to-do list, you know, what the financing options are for that. You had mentioned if long-term, so today, the long-term project projections are sufficient, they're beating, they're exceeding, welcome to $1 million surpluses referenced by Councilor Cole. What you talked about is if they weren't in that situation. And how far down line are you, you know, you're reforecasting this on a annual basis for us?
Well, yeah, you hire a professional company to come in and do that evaluation, but things change every year. You know, what's going to happen to this particular property? You're assuming it's going to be so large, maybe it ends up being bigger, maybe they downsize based on the economy. What's going to happen to the parking lot as you build that? What type of parking lot, what type of debt service do you have? What's the actual interest rates that you get on the debt? That'll have a big effect on that. So it's a, it's a long-term projection and refined as you go through this particular process.
And the municipal assets are incorporated into the value of it.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilor, any further questions from Mr. Powers? All right, seeing none, thanks again, appreciate the time.
Thanks, well.
Welcome to the podium with Director of Municipal Finance, Mark Cavanagh, who is going to speak to us about the fiscal team's projected revenue. So we all have a presentation in front of us, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, councilors. As we do every year, let's begin with a quick review of the city's revenue sources. There's three main components of the city of Quincy's revenue. The largest source of city revenue comes from the property tax. This includes residential, commercial, industrial, and it makes up 74% of the total revenue pot. The second largest share comes from state aid, and at the state level, they call this local aid, which I guess makes sense. Doesn't matter what you call it, it comes out to 17% of the revenue equation for the city. And the third is local receipts. This is the excise taxes that are collected, meals taxes, fees, fines, permits, et cetera, all totaling about 9% of city revenue. The exact specifics of the property tax rate are determined in late fall of each year during the tax rate recap and after the city's property values are certified by DOR. The amount of state aid is determined in late spring each year, right about this time, that's what they're doing on Beacon Hill now, and they always give us an early indication of what the amount should be for each city and town for planning purposes. They know we're going through this process and they try to supply us with this number if they can, and genuinely, it's very accurate. Finally, local receipts, which we're going to drill down on here in a minute, are calculated with all other revenues at the close of each fiscal year. But at mid-year during the tax rate recap, as the local receipts are finalized for the previous year, we also do an estimate, which is certified by DOR for the upcoming fiscal year, which we're finishing. So let's take a look at the, at where the estimations place us. These are the revenue accounts that we selected. There's more than 90 revenue accounts in the Munis Financial Software Accounting System. Susan knows each and every one of them by heart. We've segregated out 14 of them, and these 14 represent about 2/3 of the local receipt revenue. The amount you'll see in the current call were the amounts that have been processed through the treasury at the end of April, April 28th, to be exact, were about 82.5% of the way through the budget on that day, through the fiscal year, excuse me. And we always see ups and downs in the growing economy, even slight growth eventually gets reflected when you factor in all 90 accounts. There's, there are some timing differences, but in general, you can latch on to the trends. The most important account, the top account listed, motor vehicle excise, it looks strong. It has been strong recently, it looks strong again this year. I think we'll probably see about a $1 million increase year over year when all of a sudden. Building inspections, which was very strong last year, also looks good again, but the projection includes some late project fees. We were a little bit worried mid-year in the early part of the budget process that still only about $1 million had given in. And we got together with the planning director and Al Graciussi, the chief of operations, and we went through a process where we contacted six of the larger, largest developments remaining and got commitments from the developers and we totally expect those project fees to be filed by June 30th. We think we'll be at about 2.2 million at year-end in those fees. Could be as high as 2.5, but we've gone with the bit more conservative number after talking with each project leader. Lacking behind a little bit on the strong building inspection fees are electrical and plumbing, those come a little bit later in the process and that's probably a remnant from the late filing fees on those six projects. I am happy to report that parking revenue, which has had a rather dismal trend for the last few years, right through 2016 rebound, we're seeing some nice increases there, but I hope it'll continue. Meal stacks also look strong, I know we have several new establishments in the city that seem to be doing very well. Year over year, we could see that pop a little bit more, if we can get a little more cooperation and some nice weather out here, we'll probably see about $100,000 more by year-end if that works out. Real estate fees on a couple of the accounts, there's some ups and downs there, nothing to be alarmed about, they kind of swing both ways. Taxes, interest and penalties on motor vehicle licenses when people wait till the last minute to pay at the industry, but they won't catch their license again. Some up and down in detail, police and fire accounts, the police was a little bit down, fire was a little bit up. We'll be meeting with each of those departments later in the week to try to nail down a veteran in the place with the police by year-end. You see the grant lengths is showing a stronger revenue stream, that's good in recreational, things like that, mean people are feeling good about the economy. Vessel tax relatively stable, that's important for cities 27 miles of coastline. And so we come to the end conclusion, as you look at this, just slight sampling of 14 accounts, what does it mean? Well, in December, during the tax rate recap, we had projected and certified by DOR that our estimated local receipts should come in right around 27.5 million. And 82.5% of the way through the year, the projection on these accounts comes at 27.5 million. So we're right on track, we're right where we should be, and stability is a good thing in finance and in this area, is what the rating agencies really like to hear. If there's any questions on revenue, we can address them now or I can continue right on into the budget. Councilor Kane?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you to cover. So you said that these are 2/3 of all the revenues?
2/3 of local revenues.
Of all local revenues, all right. What's the total revenue estimated?
For the year, it'll be 27.5 million local receipts.
So, and why are we just, do we go into more, I'm sorry to cut you, I guess, do we go further into all of them?
We could theoretically go into 90, I think there's actually a 92 revenue account. Some only get a few hundred dollars a year, certification at any point in time. I can supply you with a list of the detail on everything.
That's okay.
For presentation purposes, if we cut it down to two out of three.
So is the property tax, that's not considered a local revenue?
It is, it's the main function, but the property tax is determined in the fall during the tax rate recap.
Right.
Our collections at this point in time are ahead of schedule.
Ahead of.
About 95% have been collected on the part, 82% of the way through the year.
And what's that number?
I don't have an exact number off the top of my head, I guess.
Madam Auditor, do you have it?
Yes, I do. And for fiscal year seventeen, we estimated eight million four hundred and nineteen thousand, five thirty-eight. And to date, we've collected seven million eight twenty-six one oh two point ninety. So we're at ninety-three percent of what we've estimated, and I know that there will be some payments coming in in June.
Eight, eight point four percent.
The estimated, the estimated.
For property tax?
Alright.
Yeah, that's too many.
You mean real estate tax?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's property tax. The real estate is estimated at two oh two, six twenty, nine thirty-one. And to date, we've collected one ninety-nine, four fifty-three, one ninety, which is at almost ninety-nine percent.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor?
Yes?
Hello, Counselor Vaughn? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cavill, thank you for your presentation to start with here with the revenue. Just on the motor vehicle excise tax, and I ask this every year, it looks like there's an increase. Is there just an increase of new motor vehicles coming on to the circuit here in the city?
Yes.
Or how, how do you, how do you get that data?
The excise tax is based on the value per one thousand dollars of vehicles registered in the city. So when you see an increase in excise, it's generally some more vehicles, but more importantly, newer vehicles. So people tend to be upgrading what they're driving, they're not, they're not making that old reliable car with the home on the floor, go a little longer, they feel good about the economy or their own personal financial situation, they tend to invest in vehicles and the excise taxing.
Now, I kind of asked you before, I don't know if you get to answering. Have you kind of cracked down on people that are living in the city, but not necessarily registering and paying excise tax on their vehicles? Say they came from another town or city, they moved here, but they haven't switched over with their excise. How do we crack down on that?
I'm going to have to defer to the treasurer on that, she works through Kelly and Ryan, we collect our outside fees on vehicles. They work through the registry of motor vehicles, or how they pursue those, they send out commitments based on people's last known addresses. But outside of the realm of the finance office, I'd love to collect them, I'd want to see it hit the books, but I'm not far enough.
Now, let's just say people are in the rental market, and then, you know, the landlord obviously gets the new rental agreement and people are on there. How do we, how do we navigate into getting them to register their vehicles or pay the excise tax on the, how do we, how do we do that? How's that process?
I believe that process works through the insurance. We're required to have a property casualty insurance in Massachusetts. So through that registry, registering the car through the motor vehicle department, they have real insurances and that would be the primary place of residence in Little Carter during the day, Little Carter is at night, whether it's used for commute and so forth.
Is there any crack down on out-of-state places, a lot of state plates, you know, parking into residential areas that, you know, hey, listen, this, this looks like this is someone that's actually living here now, how do we, how do we crack down on that?
I hope they do, Counselor, but it's outside of my, of my, of my.
I only ask these questions just because we are a suburban city, there is a lot of development out there. I want to make sure that we're getting every single penny, every single dollar from the people that are living in the city and the taxpayers not getting shortchanged yet, because there is obviously more vehicles on the road in the city. They need to pay the excise tax, we can benefit off of that as a municipality looking forward. I only ask those just because it's something we primarily need to crack down on continuously legally, and that's why I ask you these questions. I'm looking down at other avenues here of increases here. Interest and penalty on tax rates, it's a little bit of an increase here, we're getting almost ninety percent of the increase. What is that, how is that deemed? What is the particular reason why we were able to get more revenue off of that?
I have here an explanation from the treasurer, because I had asked myself, with ninety-two accounts, you have to really go to the departments that directly involve. Revenue recorded in this account represents interest paid on properties in which the city has recorded tax rates. These are real estate taxes in which the fall lien has been recorded at the registry of deeds. In fiscal seventeen, the city received payments on two large problematic properties that have been tax titled for quite a few years. So when we collect on two large properties that have been going through the process of not paying taxes and then finally it sets interest and penalties, it pops that number up quite a bit. So just a couple of instances of properties will make that number really jump this year.
I also see increase in the parking received taxes, which is almost twenty-four percent. Is it particularly for just more parking receipts? How, how, how are we increasing that?
The two parking accounts, they're split two ways. I believe that the, although both are showing positive increases for the year, the, I believe, Susan, you may know, we looked at this in detail, I think, of lockbox. The lockbox receipts were the parking tickets that get paid, you know, when you need to take it if you're out of the city and you can send in your payment and have it taken care of. I think that's the lockbox receipts. And the parking receipts is the, is the lots, the payment of lots of meters. Reverse. Three, the auditor, please.
So the, the parking receipts tax, it's not the lots out here, it's the, it's still the parking tickets that, you know, the, I think we have in the traffic department, parking department, they go running to get vehicles.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
And the lock, the lockbox is still?
The lockbox is still, it's affiliated with that as well, I believe.
So then park?
So.
No, no, right there.
So the revenues?
Estimated nine million.
We're not seeing here what revenue was collected through the parking.
The parking garage, the new room. I believe when we discussed the cheap down, because there's an offset in that budget, at that time, that people, that's when we.
But we still, do we count, do we, do we count that in the local fees or not?
We do not count that.
I remember I know we've been to this conference every year we go on, it's great.
It's in a special revenue account?
Got it, thank you.
So we use that money towards the, the off.
Never repeat using it again.
We go through this every couple of years, they should change their name to be, so it's more.
But, but just off the top here, motor vehicle excise tax, parking receipt tax, parking lockbox, or shoes. All three are increased.
All of its size.
As a good size.
Yeah.
So we're, we're generating some revenue off of this.
More traffic, more revenue, better newer cars.
Two more things, the meals tax, why is that staying the same at one point eight? Is, is there a particular reason why it's staying there? I mean, there's, there's more restaurants in the mix now, rise and staple than the same amount.
Actually, three-quarters of the way through the year, it was just about right on the estimated number. And that may sound like it's very flat, but coming out of that third quarter, with the weather being what it is in the third quarter, if you can get a good mix of the weather in the fourth quarter, and that you say, the new restaurants, I would expect that to pop a little bit more. Looking back historically, you do better in the fourth quarter.
Everything, everything in the, in the diff over there in the downtown, the restaurants still go into the meals tax.
It's all happening, so it's, it's like. It goes to the state and then the state distributes it back to the city quarter.
Okay, and my last one is Granite Links golf course, there's a fifty-six percent increase. Is it because they're just getting more people golfing up there? What is, why is that?
I can tell you they're paying the city more, more people golfing and on the dining and alcohol consumption, the consumption there is a percentage paid for the city.
I have talked to the Hammond's offline and I will, they will say that they, you know, the last two years have really kind of taken off. Finally started, revenue to go, trying to do everything before, it's just grind, 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 and then it's finally starting to take off. People I talk to about golfing up there, they really enjoy it, they say it's a tough course.
I think it's another good indication of the city overall economic.
It's great, it's great. I see revenue and I see stuff decreasing. Overall, I mean, looking at it, seven point seven five percent on projected amount.
On, on, on the fourteen accounts, which represent two thirds.
Two thirds, so there's still, so on this, we have a projected eighteen point seven. What is the overall projection with the other one that you missed?
We're staying at twenty-seven point five right now. We did have some counts go down, and we always remain conservative, as I said, the building inspection fees. If everybody pays and has said that they will be permitting this year, it would be two point five. We only have two point two in here, once they have one projection.
And is there any restrictions on any of these brackets where they can be spent on? Is there, like, for instance, you know, you know, hotel, motel, taxi, they don't use towards parks. Are there any restrictions on any of these amounts or any of these categories?
Hotel, motel, it's not considered in here, that's special revenue and it goes into a special account. The CPC, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, goes into a separate account, it's not, not considered part of this.
The meals tax does not?
The meals tax does go in here.
It goes in right in here, okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Cavill, we'll come back to the lock boxes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mark, I just want to go through this, and I want to get back to some of Counselor Kane, right, because I'm a little confused, but where do we see this year's projections? Because in past, I think we always have gone through one of the two thousand eighteen projections, which categories are?
The, the two thousand seventeen projection is here, I did not do a two thousand eighteen projection. We generally do that during the tax rate recap over six months into the year.
Yeah, but I think part of our process has always been in the past is trying to gauge how realistic a future projection is going to be. And we used to do that by category, I mean, I think.
Well, we're.
I don't see, I don't see any projections here.
We're, we're ten months into two thousand seventeen, and I think we feel pretty happy about how we're going to hand out.
Through you to Madam Auditor, yeah, that's FY two thousand seventeen, but there are conditions as we move forward. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the auditor, haven't we in the past always had projections out for FY eighteen for each of these various accounts?
We, we have, it has been some years that we have these projections for the, for the year that we're doing the budget, so we have.
Because I can remember lots of debates over, is this, is this really accurate, realistic? So I mean, one thing that I would like to see at some point, because I'm sure you have, is the actual projections that are being made. You know, I mean, again, everything we do is premised on there being real, realistic projections of revenue. And these are areas that I know, again, only represent as one segment of the budget, but it's a pretty cradle one at the end of the day. So again, to the extent that we have these projections, I would love to see them, I think most of my colleagues would probably want to see them as well. But the other question I have is that, you're, you're talking about twenty-seven point five million based on local fees, correct? I understand that?
Just on local receipts.
Just on local receipts. And down below, you're projecting here and, and then projection based on particular receipt accounts that get chosen, what, eighteen point seven million?
Mm-hmm.
Right? That means there's close to nine million dollars in local fees, or local, or local fees that aren't really reflected in this statement.
That's correct.
So the question is, through, you know, you were to perhaps to the auditor, Mr. Chairman, is, are there certain trends of nine million dollars that could dramatically impact or affect these, these estimates that you're making of the twenty-seven point five?
I sort of, I'm sorry, I was interrupting the counsel of you, so I sort of missed.
Okay, Madam President, please. No. The, the question I'm just asking is that you have reflected on this revenue sheet that we have, we have eighteen point seven million roughly in local, local fees. We're projecting twenty-seven point five million. So that leaves what we're really talking about, close to nine million, Brian, I get my math a little bit, but close to nine million in local fees that are not reflected on the statement we see. And it goes back to Counselor Kane's original question about the ninety some different accounts that we have. Nine million is a significant amount of money, so I guess the question that I'm asking, because I always thought we used to present this in total in the past, but not all ninety, but I don't know how it was broken down, but I thought it was broken into different categories in the past. But the question I have, are there any trends in terms of actual collection of those that could affect dramatically that nine million? Or it should be concerning to us as we go into an FY eighteen budget?
So at last year of tax rate season, we estimated our total local receipt revenue at twenty-seven million five seventeen.
Correct.
To date, we've collected twenty-two million seven fifty-nine oh two.
So generally, even with those extra accounts, you're, you're basically on track.
Right now, we're at eighty-three percent.
Thank you, I understand that. So, my mic's blank. So again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm all set. Thank you, Mark.
Go on, Mr. Cavill. You're all set?
I'm set.
Okay, turning our attention to the two thousand eighteen budget, the mayor has proposed a four percent increase over the two thousand seventeen budget. As you know, that increase eighty-nine percent is from contractual obligations, which you could reenter being a labor union agreement with the United City Union, I think eight of the United City Union took this being, or other fixed costs such as pension contribution or the health insurance obligations. The remaining eleven percent of elective spending, to the lack of a better word, is largely school, police, and fire spending. And by largely, I mean fifty-one percent of that eleven percent elective spending is for those three agencies. The other forty-nine percent of that eleven percent, by the way, the eleven percent of elective spending is about one point three seven six million, is broken out over eight departments. Teahouse, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, public buildings, one hundred and fifty-four, court judging, one fifty, parks, ninety-four thousand, planning, sixty-nine thousand, IT, sixty-nine thousand, treasury, fifty-seven thousand, municipal finance, ten thousand, celebrations, five thousand dollars. So the total breakdown of the increase over the contractual and fixed cost segment, elective spending, one point three, fixed obligations, about ten point one seven eight, over eleven five.
Mark, I, I don't want to interrupt you here, but again, this looks to me like going back down into a breakdown of the mayor's budget, right? But what, what I'm really interested in, what's always traditionally been part of this, and I want my colleagues to know and understand this, is that this is an opportunity where we actually look at the revenue that's being projected and have some discussion as to how reliably we think that revenue source is going to be. And as I look through the presentation, and I look ahead and if I miss it, I, which is a real possibility, my attention deficit disorder. But I haven't seen a breakdown of the state funding in terms of.
Or you have a breakdown?
Yeah, I don't see the breakdown of the various types of state funding that we receive and what our, what our projections are for this, this year.
The state funding is forty-seven million.
Yeah, I know, but, but again, we used to break that up by the various forms of state aid and what it was, and we would have discussions as to, in fact, it's something that we even used to have, unfortunately didn't have this year, where we had the state delegation come in previous to the budget.
I mean, I still think they're going to come in, I'm just not sure when.
So I mean, the thing is, is even if they do come in, if we looked at all of them, whether looking at chapter nine, we are looking at education, whatever, we have some discussion about how realistic those revenue projections are.
I can give you a breakdown of that, as has been predicted to us from the governor's office.
Well, I, I think that's, that's helpful, because one of the things we have to keep in mind is, just sitting here reading State House News Service, is that, as I'm sure you're aware, the tax shortfalls are absolutely incredible. And so the question becomes, to what extent is that potentially going to impact those various resources?
I've been reading it as closely as you have, I'm sure you have a potential black hole there. My reading of it, and people that have spoken to, seem to think that the Senate will be weighing different possibilities for some period of time.
Right.
And it won't affect what we've been assured, which is.
Well, that's, that's, that's good news, but it's when we go through those various types of things that our education.
I can give you a copy of what we have.
Well, I appreciate that, that you're going to give us a copy, but what I'm trying to say, and again, I hope I'm not sounding too critical, that's not my intent. But traditionally up here, there has been, you know, that this is the present version of revenue. The mayor's already come in and presented, you know, his breakdowns, and he thinks everything's going and different things like this. And it looks like, you know, we're going to go under this comparing debt spending, budget spending. But the real issue, the question as we go into this really is revenue. And I, and I just, I just think that, that some of the details in relation to that are kind of less than what we might have seen in the past. And I, and I just, I just think that, that some of the details in relation to that are kind of less than what might have seen in the past.
I have to disagree with the counselor. Every year, we've gone in detail through the local receipts. We have hands-on control over that. Every year, we've accepted what the state prediction, the condition is.
No, I'm not, again, I'm not critiquing how you guys function. I've witnessed, again, I've witnessed how well that you guys have functioned and how you've worked together, particularly how you've worked with the auditor and as a team to, to really get on top of all these different things. What I'm just saying is, is part of the budget process up here has always been to walk us through those local receipts, through the various state funding, that then leads us into our understanding of what we're levying in relation to, and how that becomes critical to whether we can afford to put forward the budget we're putting forward or if we think there's sense that there may be a need to cut. And I'm just saying is that, again, it's all about what's being presented here. I'm not questioning anything that you're presenting. I'm just saying that this year seems, and I could be, and if I am wrong, somebody please contradict me, but this seems to be off from what we've usually done in terms of really trying to, to get our, wrap our minds around what the revenue situation is. That's, that's all I'm saying. It's just.
That's fine.
Counselor Kane?
Yeah, I mean, just building off of what Counselor Finn's saying, I mean, just in terms of having a whole entire picture, it's difficult to make decisions moving forward. So, you know, there could be the way that we've done things in the past, but there's always probably room to make improvements. And I know that we had a discussion around setting the tax policy or the, the tax rate last time around, and said, well, we want to take a look at projecting and the pros and cons of that. But, I mean, even, I'm sure you guys are forecasting on a regular basis and have some idea of what's coming in and what's going out. But also, when is the audit ready for sixteen?
Supposed to be delivered tomorrow.
Okay. I was just looking, I was just looking at fifteen, it was like, it was issued about March, and we're now in May. And you said tomorrow?
It's supposed to be delivered by Wednesday, tomorrow.
Oh, that's great. So will we have a, will we get that?
We'll, we'll have a copy in the.
Okay, yeah, that's great. So just, I mean, the, and that's another good indicator, right? To look at the revenue versus expenditures for the last audit of the year and to take that into consideration.
Which is a good story.
Yeah, it's a great story, and I'd love to see it, because it looks like, you know, there was a pretty wide gap, almost fifty million from the year prior. So how does that look moving forward and how can we make these adjustments on the budget this year? Thank you.
Counselor Devon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to elaborate a little bit with both Counselor Finn and Counselor Kane are saying. Just on the state aid side is, I'd like to see trends, whether really less or more of state aid.
Slightly more.
Slightly more, but what, what areas, like chapter seventies money for coming through?
There was an increase in the chapter seventy funds. There was a decrease in veterans.
How about chapter ninety, the roads? How about the roads, chapter ninety?
Uh, no, no report on that yet.
No report on that. I think, I think moving forward as a suggestion is, I think we should move forward putting this onto the budget line in this package. Package is for us to, to understand where the trend is. For instance, looking back at the forward project, we got eight hundred thousand dollars of shortfall for us. It came back on, some of us were able to get some C P C funding out of the two hundred and fifty thousand, but then we had to pick up the pace on other areas. I'd like to see that, whether it be for roads, whether it be for education, whether it be for any type of state funding or grants, we're gonna loop, increase, decrease, how we make adjustments based on the whole entire budget. And I think it's a very important, that most factor of it.
They released that information all at one time, so it's accessible by all three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns. You can go right online, you can take a picture of it at any time to see what they're thinking. It doesn't change very often. We usually did something in late February, early March, and began late March, and we got something in April. Hasn't changed very much at all, straight around forty-seven million.
Forty-seven million, okay.
In, 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 in.
What was the education? What was the chapter sevens? Did we get a little bit of increase? What was the amount?
It was, uh, I want to say three or four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
But that's from memory. I'll include it in this file.
Okay. And the roads, when will we get that projected?
We usually get that as one of the last pieces.
Last, okay. But thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mark.
So, Mr. Campbell, I think with the, I think from the, from the counsel from here, if I correctly. So we're back in the building on Friday, and I probably should flip this out there to folks. There was obviously some scheduling conflicts that we've all went through throughout this process early. And our financial advisor was gonna be here, not gonna be there, just so you know, as chairman of the committee. I love her pretty hard, so she'll be here on Friday morning to present an update. I think that that would kind of blend itself well between now and then, if we were able to manufacture a spreadsheet, send it around to the committee so we can see, you know, projected revenues for, for this coming year. And then we would add, you know, some substance to the conversation. Don't want to derail the project, but, excuse me, the presentation. But I'm going through this, and I can see a lot of similarities to the original budget that we were presenting, right?
Sure.
So for the sake of, you know, be mindful of your time, perhaps we can kind of replace hold her on the revenues conversation. We'll revisit her on Friday with you and Cinder, and then we'll, you know, kind of proceed from there.
That's fine. She's expected midday, I believe, or.
Eleven o'clock?
To possibly get in and out efficiently as she could.
Mm-hmm, right. So she's here for eleven on Friday. And with that, if you wouldn't mind, a transition maybe over to your actual budget, your apartment.
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, you want to go into the municipal finance then?
Yeah.
On the finance budget?
You find that as well on.
Page four?
Page four. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Uh, the two lines of significant increase would be fifty thousand dollars to the city and leave buyback account. That's vacation sick leave buyback when police leave service, when they retire. It's the obligation of the city to pay them for the accumulated time. This year, we are already through a deficit in the vacation sick buyback. We've slowly built it up over the years. I can remember probably five years ago, it was like two fifty, three hundred range. It's now up to five hundred. And as I said, we're about sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars in deficit the last time I looked. But there are some scheduled retirements in June. I know there's one firefight, I've got considerable time. I think we're gonna end up around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in deficit in the vacation buyback account. I'd like to continue, or we would like to propose to continue to build that account to the level necessary. So that, that request is another fifty thousand dollars.
Do you anticipate, Mr. Campbell, between now and the end of the year, and you back before us with subsequent appropriations, cover that?
Uh, well, it would be a, go to the year-end transfers at this point in time, usually after April first to April fifteen. The outside auditors, in discussion with the internal auditor, to get a one-time accurate number as opposed to make a pre-cash transfer or otherwise cover it, just let it take care of itself in the year.
And obviously, I know there's certain accounts that have, lack of a better word, catties around how you can.
Some surpluses, yeah.
Well, deficits, right?
It would take care of.
Judgment, snow and ice, and assuming the sale of buyback.
Correct. The snow and ice deficit was a million fifty thousand when I last knew.
Yeah, the city buyback that we're already, because I noticed on the actual, one of the questions.
Right. I think we're sixteen thousand in all right now, but I think we'll be considerably more by the year. Um, other increase, other than salary increases, or the dues and subscriptions, is a ten thousand dollar increase for the community compact that the lieutenant governor has been successful in, in, uh, working with communities around the state. And that's the requisite dues.
What does that actually mean? I'm sorry, I'm just not familiar with it.
It's a, it's an association of cities that have agreed to try to improve themselves through shared best practices. The compact works with the cities within the compact to try to work together to a better, a better means to an end.